Nick, are you ready to go?
A little bit.
Okay. We'll call a meeting to order, 6:02 I bet.
You're a late pass.
I know. Let it be noted that the group ahead of us ran late.
Usually it takes pretty long.
We've all had the chance to look over the agenda. They asked for a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? All right. And I know we've all had the chance to look over the minutes from the last couple of meetings in January.
I'll make a motion to for the minutes.
I'll second. Motion by Brenda, seconded by Jerry. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
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 And that passes. All right, we have a presentation from W E T C. Erin.
Yeah, we call it We Tech program. As you're aware, we are currently in SEMNET and that's where we get a lot of our services through. Goodhue, Kenyon, One O'Mango, and San Broda Mazapa, along with Goodhue County Ed District, in addition to that now, are looking at We Tech. What this is going to allow us to do is really build into some co-op-ing of skills and things that Erin's company offers, but mostly for Mr. Hodges it means ITV for our students. So there's a couple of different things. We're looking at tech support and what we can do with that, and I think that's what Erin's going to get into explaining tonight. And then it also has an educational component. So we're really, really excited for this. Eventually you'll be voting in, signing contracts with Erin, but I wanted to make sure everyone feels really good about where we're at. With the new technology initiative and the amount of money and things that we're looking at spending, I think it's really important that we look at this service, so. We will, I signed the paperwork to get out of SEMNET because that needs to get the ball rolling on that. I signed that last week. So with that, Erin, do you want to come up and talk about We Tech a little bit? That'd be great.
What do you want me to stand for?
You know, pull that chair that Kathy just, yeah, pull that right back up and come back to the table.
You don't have a presentation to put together?
I told him not to. I did, I told him. He said, "Nice and brief."
So I said, "I'll keep it brief."
If you can keep it under two minutes, I can offer you a cornet.
I don't like to do under two minutes.
All right, that's good.
So, like Beth said, we do have kind of our core areas. We do Internet services, so providing the Internet to districts. Well, first of all, let me just start out how we're formed. We're considered a special school district in our Minnesota law, so we're a joint powers organization. So it's, we're treated like a school district. So all of the members have two members from their actual board sitting on my board, supervising media, making decisions, and making it happen. So at some point, that would be probably what they'd want to consider, so that you have voting power and you can control things. So we're formed in 1988, started doing only ITV, and I came on board in the 2000s. We brought in, besides ITV, Internet and ITV services and IT-type stuff. So kind of our core areas would be ISP, which was Internet services, IT consulting, like the Marco or some of the other stuff. So I act as an internal consultant to the districts. They, for the most part, have no external consulting on the IT level besides me. We do hosted IT services, so like cloud-type stuff, if you're looking for current buzzwords, basically running programs and servers in our data center or onsite. And then kind of a bridged IT part, which is kind of taking the cloud to the next level and saying, "All right, these are the 20 services that every school district has in their building. How can we just run them as a single entity and still give them the power to make choices?" And then share the labor on maintaining that to kind of keep overall operational costs down. And then, of course, ITV is our last, kind of the education pillar, and we have currently around 25 course offerings in eight licensure areas. The district provided the fewest number of teachers, still came in very good, I mean, probably half the teachers were the cost, net cost to them, to provide those services. So, I mean, they find a lot of value in that, that coincidence courses they can still offer. I guess I don't want to go too into detail if anyone wants. I guess I'll kind of open up, just generalize questions of how all this works and where we could fit in.
I'm on the tech committee.
Okay.
So my question is more on the lines, your first statement was you provide Internet service to the districts.
We can, it is optional.
It's optional.
At what point or where does that begin and when does the Internet providers end?
So that's a very, it's defined by the federal he-rate program, so that's very defined. It's basically fiber comes in the building, there's a piece of equipment that's owned by the cooperative, right there.
That's where you start.
That's the end of the Internet service. You know, anything after that, the service provider can support, but they can't include it in the Internet price.
Okay. So you don't, and I'm just looking at speed and everything, and I'm assuming then with the other districts, you've got the speed is good to handle whatever they've got going on.
So the way we structure Internet's a little, it's similar to ties. It's basically, we look at our graphs of overall shared bandwidth and say, "All right, if we're exceeding a consistent level, 85% of our capacity, we'll increase the capacity for everyone." But we try to keep revenue consistent, just because of being a small organization, it's a very, you know, we don't have a lot of wiggle room.
How well affect the bandwidth?
Currently, we're providing around 300 megabits to our members.
Each?
That is a shared.
That's a shared.
Combined, right now, they're using less than 50% of that. So we would add another 200 shared approximately, adding Cannon Falls in there.
How many, how many districts are in the court now?
Three. So it's Kenyon, One O'Mango, Goodhue, and San Broda Mazapa.
Where's your data center located?
It's located in Kenyon. And that was chosen mainly for historical reasons, but also municipal power and some other things that make it a good spot for housing our servers.
Good backup plans and...
So yeah, as part of that, we have just over a couple, two years ago, we invested in basically to centralize all the district server components. We spent a little over $200,000 to do that. We have four hours on battery plus some generator capacity, and everything's redundant. I could pull any server in the setup and things will still continue to run. Only two things start to fall apart, but you can have one of pretty much anything fail and operations will continue. And that's part of what the district saw, is a lot of more between power costs and server costs. We can keep costs neutral for them, but still provide a higher level of uptime with, you know, equipment they couldn't afford on their own.
So you're talking battery, you're talking UPS system?
Yeah.
I'll figure you guys wanting to get, I mean, how many districts do you want to bring in? Any goals, any thoughts?
It's really based off of how many people and just kind of our historical model with ITV. We kind of see Cannon Falls, Red Wing being paired with GCD. It makes a lot of sense. There's things that happen at the GCD level that could be coordinated better if we could have a central point in some of the IT stuff.
It's really, you know, SEMNET's gotten so big and what we're getting from them just isn't, the bang for the buck just isn't there anymore. And I do feel bad, because I'm actually the president-elect this year for SEMNET, so I do feel bad. It's a bad year for us to pull out, but it's about Cannon Falls and what's best for us. So I think it's a really good option. If you remember right, Mr. Hodges actually brought this forward last year. We were about a month, I think, behind where we could have been to move forward with an ITV room, but Mr. Hodges has been on board for a really long time, and now I think from the district level, we're ready to go.
So what do you do, transition this out at the end of the school year?
As far as ITV.
Yeah, switching, switching providers here.
Oh, that would, that would all go to Erin.
But the point, what's, what's the group you're with?
SEMNET.
Okay, but that, that's who we're getting services from right now.
Correct. So we're looking at like a July 1?
This is a change in, this is a change in service providers of some sort, and that would be, we would be looking...
And we'll decide, you know, we haven't decided if we want Internet services for sure. You know, we'll kind of, that's a process down the road. The first process is to make sure you all want to go with We Tech. I know you've heard me talk very positive things about it, but that's kind of what tonight is about. We need to be released from SEMNET, that's the next step, looking at different contracts.
Is there a cost to that?
Nope, no cost. We'll be, you know, I've talked with Marco, because we'll be reducing our expenses with Marco. It's gotten really, really high, and so this is another option to save some money there too, so.
So we can get out of, we can get out of SIM Tech for nothing, but T-Mobile wants $200 for me to switch services?
Good point.
Can you give us an idea what cost savings it's going to be going to this versus like a Marco, overpaying for Marco? You don't want me asking?
You know...
Or is that pretty tough to do?
I think they'll have really solid numbers, obviously, after we switch, and kind of like what we did with Sandstrom's and the bus garage. You know, I think we need a year of all that data. But right now, we're relying on Marco for everything, and every time the server goes down, which if you ask any of his member districts, the server just doesn't go down. And so those hours and all the, you know, time we're calling Marco in every single time, there's an expense to that. You know, cost savings, what Erin has put down on paper, and what we think we can do and with the new technology initiative you're doing, you know, we're thinking we can save $50,000 to $70,000 by going this route. Will we know for sure? We don't, we don't know. We don't know. ITV classes, we need teachers to be willing to teach on this end to make that a wash. If we have three teachers that offer a class and we've got kids that take three different classes, you know, it's an opportunity, instead of a teacher going down to .8, keeping them at a 1.0 and now they're teaching an ITV class. Goodhue's been doing this for years. Kenyon, One O'Mango, when they've got a lot of .8s, they can make them full-time by doing this.
Is this what the Houston School District's been doing for years, one of the larger Internet teaching?
It's similar. There's just more of an, more online type schooling. ITV is a little bit different. I think it reaches a different kind of student. I think there's a lot of opportunities there for kids that, you know, why would they take a study hall when maybe they could take a really cool French class or something that would maybe be different, or engaging them? Or an online is kind of reaching a different learner, maybe something that Mr. Hodges has at the ALC or... I think we're just opening up for all different kinds of learners, and if we can get our teachers on board, and Mr. Hodges already talked a couple of them into it, I think this is a great opportunity, so.
So when it comes to We Tech and the contract with the schools, is, is there a minimum number of years that you have to be contracted for?
The Internet would be the only reoccurring contract. Really, everything else is based off of what you use. So I can estimate costs, but if you have a server, remove a server, you know, we'll prorate that, but it's, there's a defined price sheet set by the board every year. So I mean, that's what, I've gone ahead and done some estimates.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any way it'll cost you more. Some of the parts, you would, you know, I mean, the highest, especially in the consulting end, basically, you'd be shifting some of the dollars probably to running equipment. So I mean, you kind of end up with a wash there, but you don't because you're not paying for power or an air conditioner or, you know, all those other aspects of it.
So if Red Wing were to come on board or the GCD come on board, our costs go down?
Basically, yes. I mean, we have, we're a cost recovery, so we have this, you know, all this equipment we spent money on, we estimated we'd pay it back in five to six years. And so every, you know, every district we add, you know, we don't spend an equal amount to it to add that district. I built in some extra capacity, so if we pay that off sooner, it means we can either ride the equipment longer and lower costs or update the equipment sooner.
There's other options too that I think the superintendents are getting really excited about is, you know, to get in an integration list, someone that can work with technology, that is a teacher and can get into the classrooms. Well, we certainly can't afford one, and their salaries are close to $100,000 a year. But with five districts, maybe we could have an integration list, you know, every Monday or, you know, break it out where we're going to get those services. So it's something that, anytime you co-op and can share staffing, you're going to save money too. So to answer your question, we're in a pretty big initiative right now. We're adding a lot of things. It's going to be really hard to show a drop in costs, but I know what we're spending on these other items in these random places, and if I can focus it on what We Tech and have it under one umbrella, you're, you're just ultimately going to save money, and that's what our ultimate goal is, so.
Right. I did share what the other three are spending, basically.
Yeah, you did. You've been very open.
You can be, you know, if you guys want to go into the details at some point, we certainly can look at that, but I think just estimating student population-wise and what's here based on a site survey, I don't see really costs being more than they are today. I think it'd be probably the same.
Is it, is it a nonprofit, for-profit? How is that?
We're a school district.
Oh, yeah, it's a still...
So it's a nonprofit school district, and even if I do IT consulting, I guess the difference is we don't actually sell, you know, if I end up getting a telephone for you guys, it's a, we pass the cost directly through, there's no, we're not in the business of selling products.
You provide cell phones?
Like this kind of phone, an office phone. You know, so I get into phone systems and anything a little wider, I'll get into to some degree, but certainly a lot of it ends up being to, it's that middle person between sometimes a vendor and the internal staff, you know, looking at a quote and saying, "Hey, we already have some of this equipment that's on here," but they don't know that, or it requires extra work to configure, and just, you know, some of that stuff can be $2,000 line items for more. And that's where a lot of the number of districts really see, on the IT side, some value.
Can you pass the lines, will you, Kurt? Because you have any other questions?
Yes, I will do that, sure. I will send that up. Thank you.
And this was a topic at the curriculum meeting that we just had, 5 o'clock, and I think the curriculum committee is really behind the idea of getting involved with the ITV consortium. We can offer a lot more classes to our students, especially AP and some of the courses, languages like Chinese and German that kids can't take here, and that'd be a really good thing for the school, so.
All right, anything else?
Yeah, we can open that door up and put that thing in use, actually.
All right, thanks Erin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. All right, moving along, the finance report.
Yeah, I did ask Kathy to come today. Does everyone know Kathy Holm, I'm assuming? She is sitting in for Josh, so if you have any questions, either she or I can answer things on there. She's got it on page seven.
Is that the sort of report?
Yeah.
Okay. This is just what I use. I'm sure Josh hands different reports out too. This is basically a look at your cash flow and cash balances at the end of, of the month based on reconciling it with a bank statement. So this was for the January meeting, so it was for the December 31st from that bank statement. And then I thought, it's just always nice to be looking at the fund balances as you're going to move forward to plan for 14, 15. It was nice for me to get familiar with where you're sitting with fund balance. And so the bottom part is really just telling you at your audit at June 30th of last year where you were in undesignedated and reserves for Fund 1, 2, 4, and 7. If there are other things you want, I will be doing the reporting for the February meeting as well. We will be doing a revised budget at the February meeting. I've been looking at that, and I just need to meet with Beth, then there are some areas that, if that planned after your budget was approved in June, that's...
What, that doesn't happen in your other districts?
That happens everywhere, so. Hopefully by February, we think we have most of the rest of the year planned out, and so we'll make some budget adjustments at the end of the month. So any questions or things you would like from me?
Thank you.
All right. All right, we have a motion from Rob, second from Jerry. All in favor to approve the finance report, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes. We don't have any other business, so we'll move on to the consent agenda. You guys have had a chance to look over the lunch report, personnel items, and if there's any questions.
I know that the consent, you just, you just wrote on everything, but Beth just asked me to explain what the pay equity implementation report is, because I do that as well. Every three years, the Department of Labor and Industry has every school district on a rotating basis do the pay equity. And essentially, in very simple terms, the pay equity is looking for, are females getting paid equitable wages in a, in a female versus male-dominated job? And are the all-female jobs getting paid equitable wages based on a male job rated at the same scale? They have, you know, three-digit codes that are rating from 100 up through 700 depending on the job. So we did pass the pay equity implementation report again this year. It was a little daisier, we dropped some categories. We dropped bus drivers and van drivers since our last report. Our technology person was a category of their own, and that went from a female category to a male category. So it was a little different, the calculations were a little different this year, but we were able to get it at 80%, which is what you really need, so.
For years, we'll talk about it again, but forget about, you know? So we're good for three years? We're good for three years, yeah.
All right, any questions on the consent agenda items? If not, I'd look for a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jerry got the motion, Kurt got the second. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, the expenditures. This must be a big month for paying bills.
Well, I think Kathy was doing a lot of catch-up work.
While we missed our meeting, we got, we had a snow day.
And Josh had a very large group of bills that he did right before he left as well. So it is a lot of pages. I know Kurt's looked at it, but if you have any questions of him or, or me, I did look through the ones I didn't read myself, getting pretty familiar now, but I can answer any questions.
Do you have any questions on the expenditures? Give us a second.
Which one?
Yeah.
I don't know, I can't hear you over the crunching of the cornets.
It's too quiet.
Dick's picking it up.
Everybody at home is enjoying it.
I have a question on, what number do you want me to give you?
As far as...
I have a question on one.
Okay, what page are you on?
I am on page 15. I'll give you a...
Have a number.
Check number?
Or the vendor, who is the vendor?
The vendor is Children's Hospital and Clinics.
Oh, okay, yep.
That was part of our legal case.
Yes, that was part of the legal case. Yep.
Yep, nope. Something you don't see, show up.
Right.
Thankfully.
Lots and lots of officials, and I avoided lots of those checks because we can't afford to do them, so there's been a run of those.
Waterford Oil, page 17, that was for the fuel for the bus garage, I'm assuming?
Yes, right.
How much we paying it?
I don't just know, I don't know, I think maybe Josh gave you a different report. This report I just take right out of our finance software, and I'm just dating it the day after the board meeting to the next board meeting. So you see these wires at the beginning, you know, technically the board should have approved the wire transfers as well as the checks, and so most of them are payroll, for payroll, but if you were wondering why those wires are at the beginning, that's what they're for.
I'd like a motion to approve.
Motion by Jerry.
Second.
Second by Rob. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes.
Kathy's are explaining the next one.
All right, so we need a motion to approve the pay equity implementation.
I'll make a motion.
Brenda gets the motion, seconded by Kurt. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. All right, we have a retirement from a food services employee.
Lydell. Oh, that was, I was gonna...
Lydell is retired.
Lydell has decided to retire. How many years has she been here? Nine. Nine years, just been here the whole time I can remember, so.
Well, that's, I've, I've been on the board nine years, she's been...
There you go.
Yeah, we always said we were coming in to go.
Oh, I don't know about that. I don't think you ever said that.
Well, I'm going to call her tonight and say we're going to say that.
We'd like to thank her first, so she did a nice job.
We'll say that at her retirement party.
That sounds good.
Yeah, she did a great job.
Motion to accept the retirement.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. The Cannon Cruisers Car Club's offering a scholarship.
And that's just procedural, you guys reapprove all the scholarships.
Yep.
I'd like a motion to accept the scholarship from the Cannon Cruiser.
Motion by Rob.
Second.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thanks to the car club. All right, next item, consideration to approve the purchase of one bus, one van for 1314 and then a bus for 1415. I think, Rob, you've got, probably got the best information on this for us, if you want to...
I do. We went through the inspection, and Andy's here to back me up on the numbers and everything. We're starting trying to get into a rotation. We've been behind on buses for a while and vans. We have a van and a car that because of their age are ineligible to transport students after the, pretty much the end of the school year, a little bit before. So the van is to replace a van that runs fine, but can only transport students. The car, we're going to keep, but that can only be used at this point for staff. At this point, we're going to keep, car runs fine, it's four-passenger type thing, or driver and three passengers. But the buses, talked with Andy, we're again at that verge of putting considerable bottom money into these buses or replace them. And I think right now what we're looking at is trying to keep that rotation going up, one bus for the 1314 and then one bus for the 1415, so we'll have a total of four new buses in three years.
What is the cutoff as far as age-wise for a van or a car?
10 years, is it?
Twelve.
For 12 years, for the cutoff of age.
The van's is 12 years.
Yeah. We have some old equipment, and we're talking...
That means I can't drive myself home.
And they don't let you go one day over.
We need a...
I don't have one to deny the age of our equipment, but we'd be...
The car has about 120 on it?
I'm going to bring my folder with that.
Yeah, the car's in better shape than the van. The van's pretty rusty.
Are we looking at leasing or purchasing these right now?
The van will purchase.
It'll be used.
Yeah, we'll go with the used one.
Yeah, but the buses are up door or...
Andy's got his hand on it.
I was looking at different vans the last few days, and the Dodge has a brand-new van out, has no bells and whistles on it, but still has power doors, power locks, air conditioning.
It's under 12.
For these days. And that's under $20,000, because we were looking for like a 2010 or '11, and they're still holding around $16,000. So we might be better off going new for 197 or something, is what I'm at right now. We should look into it some more, but divide that out, it's like $140 a month for the life of the van for the 12 years.
I guess I'd look at it more from if you get a 2010, '11, or '12, we're going to already lose two to three, four years. Doesn't matter how long it's going to run.
Right. And then there's...
We're getting done with it, so.
Five-year, $100,000 annual warranty on the new.
Yeah.
You're seven, three years old, you've already lost three years.
Yeah.
So you might be better off with that.
We should dump the van, sell it outright, or...
We'll use it as a trade-in, if we can, or, yeah.
Or stare.
We've done that before.
So then the buses, we're looking at leasing initially, or...
Well, and we've run into a quite a little snag, I don't know if you want me to talk about it, or you wanna talk about it?
I can send out a synopsis tomorrow. Financing has not been our friend. Worked with Wells Fargo again, pretty much the whole afternoon. It's just, it's an interesting thing in the state of Minnesota. Why don't I send out a synopsis on it? It's all gonna be fine, we're gonna lease the first two. I talked to the Transportation Committee about buying the buses outright because of our fund balance, but I think we all agree with a lot of the big purchases we're doing right now, that leasing is still where they feel most comfortable. So if we have the last two and this one coming up, we would have, and then the one the following year, but we'd have three leases going now and then next year, a fourth.
Is it leased to own?
Yes.
Leased to own, correct.
I think it's more of looking at the numbers to make them work would be better for us, but it is an option on the table, yeah.
So we're just approving, we're just approving tonight the option to go out and find us what we need.
Yep. To start that process for Andy, I mean, they need to know we're ordering a bus, it takes time to build the bus, so...
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other conversation?
Thanks to Andy for doing a lot of the legwork on this stuff, appreciate it.
Well, the motion here is this consideration to approve the purchase of one bus and one van, so I think maybe we should reword that to be...
I didn't hear the wording of the original.
The motion, well, it says to approve the purchase...
Right, but what was the original motion? Is that what it is?
It is, yeah. But it'd be in consideration to purchase and to lease a, to purchase a van and to lease a bus, is what you're asking of it?
No, the wording for the lawyer would be better if you said purchase, both of them. This is how we wanted to say it. I wanted it to be like this.
Because for buying buses, you do a lease slash purchase, just like Jerry said, at the end of the four balloon payments, once a year, you own the bus.
Because we have to turn in these minutes, believe it or not, to do the financing, it has to be worded this way. This is perfect.
All right, if there's no other discussion, I look for... All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Consideration to approve the first reading of the revised policy five oh one, school weapons policy.
And again, we're just the policy committee, and thank you, Lori, very much. Going through, we're trying to update as many of the policies as we can without bombarding you with so many of them. We figure if we attach a few to each agenda, that you don't have an opportunity to read through them. Some of them are first readings, some of them are second readings. You'll see the next four are the ones that you saw last month. On the weapons policy, it's gotta be the way it is. I mean, it's obviously a very integral part of everything our principals refer to, so...
Any other changes is what's marked on our current location?
Yep.
And that coincides with, on the first page, the school location, so it matches up, it says school, instead of school property, school location, so that works smoothly.
I'll make a motion, just for a quick reading.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All who's in favor of approving the policy, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Consideration to approve the second readings of the following policies, the four fifteen mandated reporting of maltreatment of vulnerable adults, the five oh six student discipline, six sixteen school district system accountability, and the social media policies. Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Jerry. Any other discussion on those?
I do. Just on the six sixteen policy, guys, just had some questions as to where we go with it, is are we doing what we need to do as a committee that's involved there? I called up the MSBA, and we are supposed to have what's called a, and maybe we do, I haven't heard of it, a comprehensive continuous improvement committee. Have you heard of that?
No.
So I didn't either, and it's, in order, I asked, well, is this six sixteen school district system accountability, they talked about implementation of graduation requirements, the school board shall appoint a graduation standards implementation committee, and I said, well, is that the same as a curriculum committee? And they said, no, you can have the comprehensive continuous improvement committee report to your curriculum committee, or if you want it as such, you can report to this graduation standards implementation committee. It gets kinda confusing. But supposedly, we are supposed to have a continuous, or a comprehensive continuous improvement committee already established, and then that reports to your, will be kinda one responsible for the graduation standards implementation committee. It's kinda something new, the way it sounds, and I'm not gathering it all, I can't comprehend it all as to where one committee is and where the next committee steps in, and how they oversee each other, one oversees one.
Isn't this kind of what you talked about at the MSBA conference?
Yes.
You talked about the world-class...
The world's best workforce, that's what I was just gonna say, this sounds a lot...
Yes.
We, their meeting tonight, curriculum meeting tonight, and they were gonna talk about, Jamie, who's gonna change the wording, because it's gotta have the word advisory in it, too. I know that no other school district has that, but they're trying to build it into this world-class work...
Hasn't have...
Has this committee.
It's interesting, and I agree with you...
But I don't know that with a hundred percent certainty, I mean, I would have to check that, but I, I've never heard of it.
Nor have you talked about it.
And I think a lot of districts probably don't. In talking to the lady up at State, said this committee is mandatory.
Okay.
So, and that's something that we, if it is, we need to look into that.
So let's wait on six one six?
Yeah, let's...
That's an easy thing to look into, I just don't know anything about it, so...
Right, doesn't sound like a lot.
Let's hold off on six one six, and then we'll...
But does that committee have to be in place for this policy to be approved?
Probably not.
Does the policy be approved in the committee, are they...
Right, you can, yes, and I think you can still vote on this to...
Approve it, but then we need to...
But we just have to have everything in place for it.
Stage two, yeah. I guess I keep moving forward with the policies, as long as we're not restricted by not having a committee.
I have a question on the... Oh, you don't? No, go ahead. You can finish, before I go to the diff. There may be some things with this next committee as to what it's formed with, though. Can we meet the requirements of what, who needs to be on this committee? Meaning, we have to, in our best effort, try and get the appropriate people on the committee, whether it's...
I still think it's gonna be this world's best workforce type committee, I bet it's gonna be very similar.
It shouldn't influence the policy itself.
Are we on task, or are we gonna find if anybody wants really not doing this policy?
Yeah.
Because that's what we're rolling down right now.
Sure.
Now, my question's on the social media, so we're sticking with just the individuals involved in extracurricular?
Yep.
At this point. And that's up to what policy, if you're in the policy committee, we understand they're gonna be tweaked and changed as we go.
I just have a hard time, I just don't understand why it's just, it gets an extracurricular.
Well, the HBL has adopted this concept, and they've actually taken our writing, and that's what everyone is moving forward. I think everyone wants to start there and see what it grows into. It's however you feel, but it is designed to be people that participate in extracurricular. You know, what a nightmare for the principals if, what's the consequence?
Right.
If you're not a student involved in anything, and that's very rare to not be involved in anything, so this impacts most of our students. I worry about Mr. Hodges and how he enforces something that there's not a tangible, what do you take from these kids? I think it's a good place to start, I think it's saying you need to be a representative of our school and our town and our community, I think it's a place to start, and see how this all works out.
What are your feelings, Jerry? What are you thinking?
I just have a, I just struggle with the, just being for kids in extracurriculars that this would pertain to. But I also understand the flip side of it, and that's where I struggle.
I think it should be on kids, too.
You know, I have, there's nothing wrong with holding students in extracurriculars at a higher standard than kids that don't wanna be involved in their school or extracurriculars. Probably a poor way of putting it, but that's reality.
Does everybody know what we're talking about for that? Just if you wanna explain it a little bit?
Well, if there's really anything inappropriate on texting or Facebook, there can be disciplinary actions for those individuals in extracurricular activities, easiest way to sum it up. If you're not an extracurricular, involved in any extracurricular items with the school, there's really no repercussion, because there's really no repercussion we can give you. I mean, I mean, there is, but there's not the same standard.
I wonder if this...
That's why I struggle with it.
But I wonder if this is good, then you realize, with social media, as far as the staff, faculty, and everyone else, social media, I think the biggest thing that I've seen with this policy is that, I again would like to see it being more strict across the board, not just to students, to faculty, but we're stepping on amendment rights now, as far as when you're off the clock, do we still have the ability as a school district to control or say what they're doing on the social media platform?
And that's exactly...
And right now, the dancers know, because we could get to a lawsuit.
Well, and, yeah, but that's still part of the issue, though, too. So for extracurricular students, we're saying we can, but for other people, we can't.
At this point...
What would you do if Johnny came and he's involved in nothing, but he refuses to sign the form?
What if, what if extracurricular student refuses to sign the form?
He doesn't participate.
Yeah.
See, now I don't know if I agree with that. But that's just me, though.
Right.
And...
It's kind of a double standard, you know?
Right, it is a double standard, in my opinion, so...
It's a standard of what's represented in the district.
Right, and I think that's some kind of something about that.
If you've got people on a dance team who are out there on social media, representing the school in the state, are they held to a different standard than someone who comes to school quietly, does their job, and then goes home and gets on the Facebook and does something different? And I get both sides, what are the repercussions? Do you give them detention, because they've gotten, there's nothing else that could be done? Is that a new policy that if you're caught on social media and you aren't in an extracurricular, well, there's the double standard possible, too, because if now you're in an extracurricular and you're on social media, you get detention plus, what the punishment is for being on the extracurricular activity?
Yeah, no, and I understand both sides of it, and I just don't necessarily agree with that policy, and I think that's okay.
I'll tell you what, when the dance team is on the floor on a Saturday afternoon, they're representing the Cannon Falls Bombers, when they're at home at ten o'clock at night on Facebook, they're representing themselves, it's a big, it's a big difference from one to the other. The other part, point, part that, for me, and I argued this last time, the other part for me, is who decides what is appropriate and what isn't? Who makes the choice? Because that's gonna be a big issue moving forward with this. It's one kid doing something that might offend people, but does administration find that offensive? No. Another child does something that offends people, now the administration finds it, that's where, that's where you're gonna get into your legal, your legal rules, because you're going to have one punished for doing one thing, and one not punished for doing one thing, and yet you're going to have parents come in and say, what's the difference between A and B?
And you're gonna get into, this will overlap into the bullying policy, which is on the forefront of a lot of different school districts as well, because there's social media bullying. So this thing's gonna morph every year, I think, into something different. I think this is where we start, where we're able to, as a district, have some control to say, guys, if you're gonna participate, we want you to understand that, just like on the court, you're not swearing at the fans, you're not swearing at the refs, you're held to a different standard. It's gonna be on social media as well, and I think this is gonna change as we go.
Was this just for code of conduct for sports-related, this policy directly?
No, it could be any extracurricular.
Speech, any activity, any note that's involved in a school. I'm just wondering, is this just a code of conduct that we expect for all students? And if it is, well, if you're in a sport, you're gonna see it up front, but do we make contact with their parents in any way if something was to, look, this is something that we, as a district, don't, we find as not appropriate, your parents will be notified as to what's happening? Or is that something that...
Well, now, now we step on toes, okay, they're at home doing this at ten o'clock at night, is that a school's district responsibility, in an extracurricular or not? Now, we're gonna add another layer of, well, it's Johnny who doesn't have any extracurriculars at ten o'clock at night, sending something out, did we offend or did we not offend? Whereas, somebody who was on the dance team, ten o'clock at night, sending something out, offensive to the school, do we do nothing?
I think any student doing anything is offensive to the school, I do, unfortunately...
It's not ours to answer, though. I think this is a policy that we start with. I think there's gonna be a few policies that are gonna be reviewed more often. We've got, how many policies are there total? Lots to go through. Hundreds, literally, that we have to go through, and there's three-year, two-year, and one-year increments we have to review these in, we have to get on board with them. Some of these are gonna come, I think, to the forefront more often. I think by not doing this, we do ourselves a disadvantage. By doing this, it's a start, is it enough? Some people may say no.
It can be a work in progress.
What else is nice, is if a kid moves from our school to Cassin, or, you know, if they're moving, and that happens, they move within the HBL, it's very, it's become kinda common, and we're doing it as a united force. And I think that's saying something when districts say, you know, it's not okay to get on Facebook and bash a team after you won a game, or you lost a game, or whatever. You know, we want to, what we're struggling with is pushing kids out, and academically they're ready, and we're giving them all these opportunities, and sometimes these kids just don't know how to act like young men and young women. You know, if you did that, and I try to tell kids that when they get in trouble for doing something like this, would you do that on the workforce? Well, they don't know, they don't have a job. You know, if I post that, I could lose my job over it. And it's trying to teach them those skills, and, I mean, just by violating the policy doesn't mean it's off the track team. It's an opportunity for the coach to be involved, the principal to be involved, I just think there's some really good opportunity here to teach kids what it's like to be in the workforce, too, and to be exceptional at everything we do. It's just my opinion.
All right, we have a first from Rob, and a second from Jerry to approve all four of these policies. If there's no other discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
I just oppose the social media one.
Okay. Yeah, you can, I respect that, I totally respect that.
All right. Consideration to approve the renewal agreement with Teachers on Call. We had some, we had some conversation on this, so I'll go with some of the teachers.
Yeah. It's taken some time, because it's taken me time to have that agreement worked out with Teachers on Call. We've done a pilot the last three weeks, we went in and every teacher that was listed in there as a short call sub, and there is a difference, you can be a short call sub with a history degree, or you can be a short call sub and taught school for forty years, like many of our retired teachers. And what's unfortunate, they fall in the same category. So Teachers on Call didn't really wanna work with us a whole lot on that. A short call sub is a short call sub. Well, they're not to us, and we had some teachers that came in, and I thought they were really eloquent in how they explained that, and why we want educators in our classroom. We want them to know classroom management, we want the best of the best, and that's what we expect. So you guys know that for two months, we've been battling back and forth, and people at Teachers on Call may not love me, but I think we really understand each other now. And what we did for the last three weeks since our last board meeting is we went in and we blacked out everyone that's a short call sub that doesn't have a teaching license, and we haven't had any shortages, and that's what they kept saying they were worried about, you know? The contract says we won't provide shortness for you, da-da-da-da-da. Rob had some great conversation with him up at MSBA, and I think we've come to an agreement. So the contract you see in front of you, I support, you see my name signed to it, they waited a long time for that signature, but I have read it, and I understand, they understand what we expect, I've even added a special note at the bottom, we're good, and we have piloted with what we're going on. So our long-term subs, or our short call subs that have been lifelong teachers are certainly welcome to teacher, and we've had no shortages in the three weeks, so... With that said, I think you're fine to move ahead, and I'm sorry this was so slow, and the contract actually did expire on February first, but I still think it was worth getting it right, so it's working.
I'll make a motion to approve the renewal agreement.
I'll second.
And a first by Kurt, second by Brenda. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries, all right, down to reports, board members. Anything, as Bob would say, anything for the cause.
Do you wanna report on the curriculum meeting? Should I? I'll give you a brief summary of that. One of the old business was the idea of offering personal finance or actually requiring that as a graduation requirement, and it was decided to not require that, because it would require additional one-point-out teacher, and seventy-five percent of the seniors are taking the class, if they're in class, it's also available online, and so we thought that we were covering that. Let's see, the elementary and sixth grade language arts curriculum is up for review, and Derek's gonna form a subcommittee to review the materials from the vendors. They're looking at either a basal series or more of a balanced literacy approach, that would be a variety of materials where the teachers would create their own curriculum. They're leaning more towards the basal series, but they're gonna, the committee's gonna review that and then report to the curriculum committee. Let's see, no, new business was they will be offering probability and stats as a math course, so offer that fourth year of math for students. So that was approved. And then we also had the discussion about WITC or the ITV Consortium, I think we've covered that in the presentation today, but the curriculum committee is definitely in favor of that. Also talked about RTI in the middle school and the high school, and that's going well. Not sure, that was just mostly a discussion item, I guess, no action on that. We have Brian Swanson doing the math specialist, and then Andy Abelson and Barb Templer doing the reading specialist, and doing really well with that. Oh, the elementary will, will be moving to trimesters to match the middle school schedule. And that helps with standard-based grading, to give them more time together during the junior period. We ran out of time.
We booted you out.
New business will be Ames and Star, we'll talk about next time.
Thanks Brenda.
I have a question.
What?
You gave me that look.
I didn't.
No, I, simple question, can we have a board meeting at the elementary school one of these months?
That's, well, you can do it next month if you want.
Great idea, love that. Thanks for working. I'd have none or what, we've been doing them once a year, right?
Yeah, I mean, we might kick you out, if we end up converting this into an ITV room, we're actually looking at one of the health rooms first and then doing this room. But if we end up converting this, we'll move down there permanently. This room is a really valuable room for teaching out of, and the elementary is actually a better setup. You have just as good a parking, so I'm not opposed to, we may have to look at that anyway, so.
We always move on the other side of the wall.
I, I will ask you this, are you looking at a room down at the elementary?
No, we're looking at the atrium area, cause it's so nice for seating for the people that.
The, the actual little.
Yeah, the.
Stage area.
Stage area, it works out really well. And acoustically, it works really well for the tapings.
We just can't hear each other.
I just, I just can't hear anything.
Well, I think it's cause we've always set up in a straight line.
Not that the board has to, you actually hear each other.
What you do need to do is set it up like this versus the long line. I think that's why I've had, that it's felt like.
I, I, I understand.
We can get a megaphone.
We'll just put one on top of that, try and source three back and three in front. Then we can.
It's terrifying, I can't hear.
We set for, for March, right?
Yeah, okay, so. We got a school board meeting on February twenty-fourth, let it be known that I won't be here.
We do, Dave's here, couple of reports.
Oh, Dave's got the report back there, I didn't see him listed. Dave, I'm sorry about that.
I didn't see myself listed on here. Now, just, I guess that basically, hopefully this is the last whole night that we have this winter. It's been, it's been surreal. Just as far as putting up with it, and we've got some rows and fights again out at the bus garage and stuff like that, so we're working on that again, so hopefully we'll be to the end of that shortly here. And as far as the activity and everything, this is a full, full week. We have three nights of basketball, wrestling, and then Saturdays, Sundays. I think we have eighty youth athletic basketball teams here and stuff like that. Tonight is kinda wall-to-wall too right now with our activity and stuff, so. But in that, be glad to see spring coming.
Thanks Dave. Okay, now, we can talk about the upcoming meeting on February twenty-fourth. Looks like we gotta talk about the calendar, the spring coaches, and the revised budget. So, anything else from the board?
The only thing I have is, just going through the end of the month, the receipts paid out, or the checks paid out with bills. And I know, Dave, this is for somebody electrical that comes in and out and for services that we receive from the people that do the electric. I, I'm just a little uncomfortable, just a little bit as to, sometimes the bills are kinda vague. I'd just like to see a little bit more itemization if they would be, feel comfortable doing that.
Be honest, full itemization.
Full item.
That's where you'll be comfortable. Yeah, just be honest.
Only, I just, you know, what's the hourly rate, how long they're here, that sort of thing, just a little more specific there.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Or make it, some companies just request, do you have a lot of sub quarter ahead of time?
I have, you know, bigger, stuff like that. They've always been to where they give me a not to exceed. And I can remember meeting had been going over that most of the time, they're, they're under it. But they just, you know, just in case, but.
If you, I guess my point, if you see a bill that comes in that's not itemized.
Yeah.
Just clip the quote and then you could actually see what was all done on it.
I think some of the projects are kinda small.
Where, right.
It may not be necessary, cause there's a lot of small ones, and it's like, okay, you know, a thousand dollars here, a thousand there. It's like, what, what's done? And I'm not questioning it in the sense that, you know, you're not doing good work. It's just, just for our benefit as to what we're looking at here.
It says name on it.
I'm saying.
Good point.
Okay, last thing we have is public forum. Do we have anybody from the public that wants to get up and address the board on anything? It's your chance right now.
Good, my intern doesn't have anything to say, that's good.
Do we have any public here then, really?
Okay.
Is there anyone really from the public here?
No.
Technically.
She's the media.
She's the media. All right, so if we don't have anything with public forum, I would look for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Yep, motion by Rob.
Second.
Second by Kurt. If there's no discussion, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, meeting is adjourned.
Five minutes to the varsity game. Five minutes to the varsity.
It's only an hour, it seems longer.